2022 meeting of the State County Board of County Commissioners. Can I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Bartlett, here. Best, Duffy, here. Gallo, here. Lapore, here. Deputy Director Lazara, here. Director James, here.
I'm going to call for an invocation and then a pledge of allegiance. The reason why I'm saying it now, after the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who died while serving in the United States Armed Forces, and all who died from COVID-19, especially the 2,191 citizens of Passaic County. And I'm also going to ask you for a moment of silence. We've lost several people that were county residents that were very active. One was Crystal Cleaves. He was a well-respected community leader who served on the Patterson School Board from 2011 to 2017. She ended her career at the one-stop career center over attached to the college that we run, trying to help other people get training or jobs. Rita Sumter was the mother of Kenneth and mother-in-law of Assemblywoman Siobhan de Sumter. Artie Rowe, wife of the late Reverend Albert P. Rowe, who was the pastor of the historic Calvary Baptist Church in Patterson. And Francis A. Chef, or Frankie, son of Joe Chef, who was the president of the NJEA Passaic County Chapter. May I rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, which will be done by Commissioner Duffy.
Ladies and gentlemen, and no, I'm sorry. Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
... of the United States of America, a truly public protestant, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And a little out of order, Lou, I'm sorry. You want to do the open, now some of the open public meetings law?
Thank you, Director. Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect specifying the time, date, and location, including any annual notice, adopted the reorganization meeting, and filed with the county clerk in posted administration building, and mailed to two news sources in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 27, 2022?
Make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Duffy and seconded by Commissioner Lapore. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett, yes. Duffy, yes. Gallo, yes. Lapore, yes. Deputy Director Lazara, yes. Director James, yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the proclamations? There are three of them. Please read them. Can I have a motion for all three?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, yes. Duffy, yes. Gallo, yes. Lapore, yes. Deputy Director Lazara, yes. Director James, yes.
It is now my pleasure to turn the meeting over to my county administrator, Anthony Genova, who happens to be an Italian.
Thank you, Director. Proud Italian, too. As everyone knows, October is Italian Heritage Month. Yesterday, we celebrated Columbus Day very proudly around the county. And we are honored here this evening to have two very distinguished Italian-Americans that we are going to honor here this evening. But at this time, I'll turn the program over to Freihold and Lapore.
Oh, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to be here with all my good friends in the Italian community. Before we move on, I just want to recognize Mayor Coro from Totowa. Thank you for coming, Mayor. We have our Passaic County Sheriff, who isn't Italian, but I'm glad that he's here. So as Anthony mentioned, we're here to honor two of our Italians in Passaic County who have contributed so much, as did all the Italians throughout the years. I was fortunate and proud to be asked by Mayor Andre Say to raise the Italian flag in Patterson yesterday. And basically, in my short little speech, I said that Italians have done what everyone else has done. They contributed to this country, whether they're entrepreneurs, whether they're engineers, whether they're bricklayers, whether they're chefs or bakers like my father was, or working in the factories like my mother did. We're all proud of our contributions to this great nation. And we join the whole chorus of cultures who make this nation what it is. It's a phenomenal country, no place else like it in the world. So, but today, we're going to honor our Italians. And I'm going to ask my fellow Italian, Nick Gallo and Samuel Lazara, to join me up front here. By the way, I'm Italian. He just never recognized that I'm Italian because it was my mother.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Every year, 17 years of that. So we'll start out with Chris Falone. Chris, climb up and join us, please. Chris, not only is the current president of the Roma Club, you're a member there, right?
Will be.
Will be. Ah. Do you have to go through initiation? Is that what it is?
Something like that.
Can I hold the paddle? No, no. Now, that's fraternity. So Chris is so valuable to Passaic County, not only as his contribution, as the president of the Roma Club, and keeps all those Italians in that building there in check. They get a little, they get a little butts and gobs sometimes. But also, he is the chef over at Camp Hope. And if you ever had the opportunity to visit Camp Hope, you know exactly what I'm talking about. He heads up the crew up there. Whenever we have an event, whether it's for seniors, whether it's for kids, or any club that goes up there and enjoys the fresh air and what's going on up there, it's nothing like an Italian in charge of the food to make it. Just put the crown on the head of the thing. So I'm going to read this. "So, we're at the Board of County Commissioners. The county of Passaic has a desire to recognize Christopher Falone for his Italian, for Italian Heritage Month. Chris was born in Patterson, New Jersey, graduated from DePaul Catholic High School in Wayne, and graduated from St. Peter's University with a bachelor's degree in political science. Chris is a supervisor within the Camp Hope Division of Passaic County Department of Parks and Recreation since March of 2016, and has worked as a dietary supervisor at the Preakness Healthcare Center in Wayne from July, November 2020, but due to staffing shortages during the pandemic of 19." "Chris Falone was an active member of West Patterson Volunteer Fire Department from 2011 to 2019, served as the West Patterson Volunteer Fire Department Company Number One Vice President from 2017 to 2018, and served as the General Secretary of the Roma Sports Club in Woodland Park. Chris Falone has participated in the ribbon-cutting ceremony for now the new bashi courts on McBride Avenue in Woodland Park, and partnered with the Borough of Woodland Park through the Roma Sports Club on a beautification project in Dowling Gardens. Chris Falone also serves as a youth committee co-chair of the Conference of Presidents of the Major Italian-American Organization to help engage college and high school students of all backgrounds who would like to study the Italian language or Italian studies at college level and assist students who are looking for placement studies abroad in Florence and Rome." Pretty neat. "Chris is married to Elena Falone and are proud parents of their son Nicolo." Nicolino Nicolo. "Now therefore be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Christopher Falone for the significant contributions he has made and the exemplary service he has devoted to the county of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Christopher Falone happiness and continued success."
You say both Italian and English? I can't. Sure. "Prima di partire, voglio dire grazie di cuore a questo comitato per il riconoscimento e per l'onore." Anyone that is around me or the Roma Club at all over the past few years, I'm sure you're aware that nobody likes the sound of their own voice more than I do. That being said, I won't throw it on too long. I just want to thank the Commissioners for this honor. The community of Italian-Americans in Passaic County goes back well over 150 years. There are still major enclaves today in Woodland Park, Totowa, Little Falls, Wayne, North Heldon, throughout the county. We have three county commissioners of Italian-American origin, as well as our county administrator. So I have no doubt there are plenty of individuals far more deserving than I am. But that being said, I am grateful and I'm incredibly humbled to be able to receive this award, and I thank the Commissioners. I thought that was... You're even worse than me.
Okay. So this is a proclamation for Sam Benvenuti.
Come on up, Sam.
Come on. We welcome you here today. We're so happy to be able to give you this proclamation. "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic has a desire to recognize Salvatore Benvenuti for Italian Heritage Month. And whereas Salvatore Benvenuti was born in Calabria, Italy, in 1948, he was the third child of seven, born to Pasquale and Ann Benvenuti. In 1955, his family came to America and settled in Woodland Park, New Jersey, formerly known as West Patterson. Whereas Salvatore Benvenuti attended Passaic Valley Regional High School and graduated in 1967. Sorry. A year later, he was drafted into the Army and served in the 82nd Airborne from 1968 to 1970. After his honorable discharge, he continued his education at Montclair State University, earning a bachelor's degree in business/accounting, and went on to receive his master's degree from Pace University in New York City. And whereas Salvatore Benvenuti worked for the Internal Revenue Service from 1973 until his retirement in 2007. He then became the executive director for Unico National until his recent retirement in 2022. Whereas Salvatore Benvenuti was very active in his community and was always on the front lines to help his children and others in the community. He was a member of the Little Falls Recreation Commission and volunteered as a coach for various sports, and used his skills as an accountant to help many nonprofits and others in need. And whereas Salvatore Benvenuti is married to Debbie Orecchio, okay, and are proud parents of their children, Paul and Gina Benvenuti. He loves to share Italian culture and traditions with his three grandchildren, Rocco, Bruno, and Adalina."
Italian.
"Now therefore let be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Salvatore Benvenuti for the significant contributions he has made and the exemplary service he has devoted to the county of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that the board wishes Salvatore Benvenuti health and happiness."
I'll forget to thank a few people, you know. The first, I want to thank the State County Commissioners for this honor. As my other honorary said, there's a lot more people probably as deserving or more deserving. But again, thank you very much. You know, as you, they read through my bio, I guess, I feel like I've lived the true American dream, having immigrated to this country with literally nothing. We came here and we were able to better ourselves by working hard, going to school, getting a degree, and having a great career and a great family. And that didn't come without a price. You know, our forefathers really paid the price for that. That made it, enabled me and people like me to do that. You know, we had the lynchings in New Orleans when they lynched about 11 Italians. You know, we had the internment camps during World War II where they imprisoned Italians just because they were Italian. We had discrimination. There was a lot of price that was paid that enabled us to better ourselves and live this life. And that's one of the things I got involved with Unico. As you know, Unico is a large Italian-American service organization. I ran that for over 10 years as their executive director. Now, you talk about dealing with a Roma Club. I tried to deal with about 6,000 Italians. Not an easy job. The main thing with Unico is that they really promote Italian heritage and culture and try to deal with discrimination against Italians and stereotyping. Really, it's not so much discrimination today. It is stereotyping Italians as mob. And obviously, we know we're not all part of the mob. And again, one of the things that's important to me is family. You've mentioned, you know, the grandkids and I have here my brother Joe and his wife Mary, my wife Debbie, and some friends from Unico. And of course, my daughter Gina back there. If I don't mention her, I'll really be in trouble. But, you know, we're doing that. We're trying to instill that Italian heritage that we had over in the old country. We still, I still make my own wine, make the super saute, you know. And now I get my, you know, my son-in-law involved, and now my grandkids are getting involved. So that's how we try to keep things going and keep the heritage in our culture. Again, thank you very much for this honor. Much appreciated. Grazie d'anni. We have, Sal, we have one more recognition.
No, sit down. Pat, we're going to let Terry Duffy do this one. Sal was going to tell you, don't sit down. We have something else for you. Commissioner Duffy, because we'd like to give him something to do. It keeps him out of trouble.
We got the Irish guy coming. Easy, easy. There's a lot of us up here.
On behalf of Passaic County Commissioners, we'd be grateful. As a small token of our appreciation for your service. You in the Army?
Yes.
Of course.
I'm sorry. Sit down, Terry.
Okay. Want to get a picture?
So there is food catered by the brownstone, I believe, downstairs. You are all welcome to go down and partake in that.
More beef and cabbage?
We will join you as soon as we get the business of the county out of the way here.
We've got to move the podium. At this time, we have another presentation. This board is...
Thanks, Michael.
This board, in my tenure as administrator, has made a concerted effort to make our golf courses, which are in Wayne, Preakness Valley Golf Course, the best that they can be. And in fact, we get a lot of comments that they are probably the best public golf courses in the state of New Jersey. And we thought that we would recognize some of the people who play golf there, who partake in some of our tournaments, and who actually won some of those tournaments. So I'm first going to call upon our PGA Pro, Marty Viberhoff, to come forward, along with Nick Krychak, who is our golf course manager. Fortunately, Daryl Sparta, who is our parks director and in charge of the maintenance at the golf course, had a family emergency. He couldn't be here. But without Daryl and his staff and Marty and Nick, the golf course couldn't be what it is today. And I see a lot of heads shaking there. The biggest complaint that I get today is that people can't get a tee time, which is a good problem for us to have, as compared to when I first walked in here and people were hitting off the bats. It was really not the golf courses that we see today. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Duffy to step forward. We have a few people that we're going to call upon, and three, and Commissioner Bartlett.
It's a tall guy's turn. Three and a half Italian county commissioners, but you got your token Scotsman here, which I guess is why I'm up here with Terry to talk golf. But everything Anthony said is absolutely true. You know, just living in Wayne and driving past the golf course, I've seen the remarkable progress it's made these last 10 years. And that investment is paying dividends in the enjoyment of the people who go up there and more and more organizations using it every year as a facility for fundraisers and for outings. And it's really to the credit of our great, great team up there. And I know we also have some of our champions that we want to recognize. So Terry, I'll let you pick up.
I'm sort of here, yeah, okay. As Marty knows, I don't play golf. I'd rather watch ice melt. And every time I play golf, every time I put my Santa Claus suit on, I'm hungover for three days. So I'm going to stay away from it.
Commissioner, if I might add, just as a little side note, one of the reasons we've been able to maintain the course so much is because Commissioner Duffy stopped playing.
I stay off it. Thanks for those words of support. So Laura Tensa, tournament chair, Preakness Valley. Laura, you're here? Come on up.
So Laura, I want to get this right. The Preakness Valley Women's Golf Club is the oldest or longest?
The oldest.
The oldest.
What is it, 75 years?
75 years. You are not the oldest. The organization is the oldest.
Don't get us in trouble.
I'm trying not to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to stand up here? We'll get a picture. If you only have three.
Is Connie here? Connie survived.
Connie is here.
Come on up, Connie.
Unchatted.
Unchatted. All right. Excellent.
Maybe I'll take it up.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, let's ask the other three folks to join us up here. Holly Ryan, Terry Cisek, and Samuel Sotek.
Terry, where's Terry? Congratulations.
By process of elimination, you must be Samuel.
How about a picture? Anybody want to come up?
And just for the record, the folks that we're acknowledging here are Holly, the club champion, Terry, the president's cup champion, and Samuel, also the club champion. So what makes someone a club champion and what makes someone a president's cup champion?
Club champion is a low gross score after two weeks on the same course. President's cup is a low net score after two weeks, one on each course.
Okay.
Gross means it's your actual score. Well, gross means it's your actual score. Net score means it's with your handicap.
I didn't even know golf involved. That's fantastic. I also want to mention, since we are recognizing all these folks, unfortunately, there were some other champions who were not able to attend today. Robert Ariann, the open champion. Scott Carney, the Diet Cup Patriots championship team captain. Adam Sokowski, the amateur champion. And Faith Sanson Myers, sorry, Faith Sanson, the Myers-Chance Memorial Tournament champion. So just all those tournaments, all those champions, extraordinary stuff happening up there thanks to the organizations that make it happen and the folks that keep it great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Want a picture?
Yeah.
Come on.
Yes. You want to step all the way in? You know how to do this. Wash your feet. But it's important that we reach out to everybody, anybody who needs a job, who meets any of these qualifications. And if you didn't understand everything I said, because I'm going fast, just contact Preakness Healthcare. It's on Oldham Road and Wayne. And talk to the Personnel Division there, and they'll go over this with you. And if you know anybody who's looking for a job, who's interested in working in the healthcare industry, this is a great opportunity and a great way in. So try to help us out, help yourself out with a job that's actually worth it.
Director, there were just two other things that I forgot to mention, if I could. We have two very exciting projects that we are partnering with. Two of our entities, Friends of Passaic County Parks and Passaic County Community College in Rifle Camp Park. The bids for the amphitheater were taken late last week, early this week, late last week. The Friends of Passaic County Parks met last night, awarded the contract to the low bidder, who was Thomas &amp; Sons, who has done other projects for us here in the county park project. So we're very excited about the amphitheater project. It's our continuing progress in our parks, particularly Rifle Camp is our last park that we have really focused in on. Last year, if you recall, we redid the bathrooms, we added playground equipment, exercise equipment, a dog park, which has been great. And I know last weekend, our Department of Senior Services had their picnic up there last week, and many of the residents and the seniors who had never been to Rifle Camp Park were amazed how beautiful it really was. So we're very excited about that project. It's going to incorporate the natural landscape of the amphitheater, which is there now in disrepair. The second project, which the community college is partnering with us, has gone out to bid for the new nature center at Rifle Camp Park. They, I'm not 100% sure if they have actually awarded it, because I don't know if they've had a meeting yet, but if they haven't already, at their next meeting, they will be awarding that project. And that's going to be a great project. Again, the nature center fell in disrepair. It's an opportunity for the college to use it as an educational facility, as well as partner and allow us to use it for park owners as well. So two exciting projects in a park that, as I said, is really the last park that we're concentrating on and bringing it up to what people expect out of our parks today, and all while maintaining the natural beauty. And Rifle Camp is a great hiking park. So all keeping that in mind. So two really exciting projects that I just wanted to update the board on.
Thank you.
Now that really concludes my report.
That's really good news. Thank you, Tony. Thank you for that update. Okay, we have no communicate... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner, Deputy Director Sandy Lazara, anything to report?
Sure, just one thing. This past Saturday, we had our annual Plaza in the Park celebration. We started in 2016, and it's grown exponentially since then. And it wouldn't have been the success it was without all the departments, and many of you were here, and I thank you all for every ounce of effort you've put in to make it a success. I mean, you know, it's a team effort. And the Passaic County Board of Commissioners has worked on this for many years. And we couldn't have done it without the partnership with the Passaic County Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Burnick has let his K-9 division and his mounted come up and do demonstrations, and he's worked with us so well. And I guess what I want to say is, this would not be the success it is without all of you, without the Board of Commissioners, and without our Passaic County Sheriff's Department. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Sandy. Commissioner Bartlet.
Thank you, Director. Just want to remind everybody that all of this happens because you elect this board every year. Next Wednesday is the deadline to register to vote in this year's general election. Many of you know, who've heard me talk for a long time, I'm a voting rights lawyer. This is the most important thing that we do as rank-and-file citizens of this county and this country. And I encourage everyone to find somebody in your community, a new neighbor, high school or college student just turned 18, someone who has recently completed incarceration and reestablished their right to vote, anyone who hasn't been part of the process yet. Let them know why it matters. Let them know that next Wednesday is the deadline to register to vote in this year's general election, and make your voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Duffy.
So nobody heard what I said before? Maybe that's a good thing. But Sandy, I commend you and the staff for a great job. And John, you're absolutely right. You got to get out there and vote. It doesn't matter who you vote for. Vote for the person that you think is going to do the job, and exercise, and you're right. And if you don't vote, you really shouldn't be allowed, not allowed, but don't complain. So that being said, that's it, Director.
Thank you, Terry. Commissioner Gallo.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Commissioner Lepore.
Oh, thank you, Director. I have almost... I have 12 items on the Finance Committee for my college review. But I want to take this opportunity right now to acknowledge Commissioner Lazara for the outstanding, outstanding job she did at Plaza in the Park. If you've never been there, it's an experience. All these dogs running around. Actually, the dogs are the show, because they're just running, barking, they're looking around, they're like, wondering what the heck is going on here, where all these dogs come from. But seeing the owner being dragged to and fro. But I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department for providing the K-9 unit, put on a phenomenal show for all the residents that come to the park. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maybe I should be one of the volunteers, maybe? The... I also want to acknowledge Shirley Force, the Director of Senior Services. I can't tell you what an amazing job you and your staff and the volunteers did there to provide great time for our team. I was amazed as to how well it was run. I mean, of course, you put me to work giving out the bags, but that's okay. That's okay. I enjoyed every second of it. So we're very, very honored to have you, and you did such a phenomenal job, day in and day out. I just want to acknowledge your department, the serious and great work they do for us. Thank you very much, Shirley. And that concludes my report.
For you, Director, I neglected to mention that there were two people that really worked hard to make Plaza in the Park a success, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention Lowell Forbes, the former captain of the K-9 unit, and Pat Ring, who spent an entire year working with each of us as a group. Again, it's a team effort, but I would be remiss if I didn't give them a shout out too.
We also have to thank you, Shirley, and those who participated. Sandy worked on this also. The Veterans Appreciation Picnic was a complete success. Everybody really had a good time that came. Our Health Department was there, giving out vaccines and other information. So it really was a home run, and I appreciate all the work that everybody put in for that, and the people who are at Camp Hope, who provided the food and did all the work that they did there. It just, there was no glitch this year. It went off very well. The medal ceremony was dignified and went off well. So, you know, it gets better and better every year we do it, and I think that the veterans that show up really do enjoy that day. They really do have a good time that day, and, you know, we heard the comments as they were there. So thank you again for that also, and thank you, Sandy, for working so hard on that, too. All right. Can I have a motion, Laura? There's no communications. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
Motion. Second.
W. Lepore. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlet, Miss Duffy. Yes. Gallo. Yes. Lepore. Yes. Deputy Director Lazara. Yes. Director James.
Yes. Anybody wishing to speak to this board, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address the board.
Okay. Hi there. Anne Schenackenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. Today, I'm here as a Passaic County and Clifton resident, voter and taxpayer, as well as representing Save Rifle Camp Park Coalition. As this is an important issue that I would like to draw your attention to, there is an application in front of the Clifton Zoning Board for 522 Valley to build townhouses adjacent to Garrett Mountain. And this would affect a view shed from Rifle Camp Park, but there's also something very important about this particular parcel of land, and I believe eventually it'll end up in front of the county, because it's on Valley Road, which I believe is a county road. I'm going to redo something. As you know, probably know already, Clifton, the city of Clifton, has been subjected to increased and substantial flooding, damaging and destroying property and endangering everyone. It's been bad. It's getting worse. We'd like it to not get worse anymore. So I have some information here about that parcel of land, because I am not an engineer or a scientist in this respect. And this is from Joe Labriola, who's a qualified environmental professional, very knowledgeable about waterways and wetlands. So the forest, this is what he had to say about this particular property. "The forested rear portion of the property is important to the ecological integrity of the east-facing slope of Garrett Mountain, and is especially significant as a continuation of the water and biological resources of the adjacent Passaic County Rifle Camp Park." And this is the important thing here. "This is the uppermost reach, headwaters of the Weasel Brook sub watershed, and is critical to flood control and water quality maintenance of the entire Weasel Brook system, all the way through town." And we got flooding all the way through town. Doesn't just up in the upper end of Clifton, it's through Weasel Brook Park and down through Dutch Hill, possibly botany. I'll continue. "Since there is an observed drainage connection from the pond at RCP running down the slope, there is a potential for freshwater wetlands and open waters to be present on this property, on this portion of the property. A presence/absence letter of interpretation should be obtained from the NJDEP Division Land Use Regulation for this entire property. In addition, the rear portion of this property contains mixed deciduous forest with a tree canopy dominated by large tulip trees and red oak and a variety of migratory and resident songbirds, and raptors, hawks, and owls are known to rest or nest in these trees. Other wildlife forms are likely present at ground level." And to that...
Ten seconds.
Okay. I'm just going to add, as you know, it's an important bird area, national Audubon. So please, if you can reach out to the state, if you can keep an eye on this, if you can get involved, we don't need any more flooding in Clifton. So find a way to purchase this land. It's very significant, and it needs to be preserved for the sake of everyone who lives below it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close public portion.
Second.
Second.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlet. Yes. Duffy. Yes. Gallo. Yes. Lepore. Yes. Deputy Director Lazara. Yes. Director James. Yes.
And a quick question. Has the application been before the Clifton Zoning Board already?
No, it's, I think they're waiting on the environmental fact statement. It is on the agenda. I don't know whether it's going to move through. The meeting's coming up next week. Hopefully, they'll have everything in order, because it really, it really needs to be evaluated, and it should be evaluated by the state.
Thank you.
You know who's on that committee? Yeah, I mean, you know.
Environmental committee?
Yeah. Tell me, tell me after the meeting. I'm just curious if you know.
Oh, yeah. There's a few people on there that I'm aware of.
All right.
Yours are Alessio Ramone.
Okay. I know Alessio, and she's a PhD, so I'll talk.
Yes, yes. She's a PhD on it.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Thank you very much. Okay. Consent agenda, is anybody going to object to any item on L-1 through L-40? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda from L-1 through L-40.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll.
That was moved by Lepore.
Yes.
Seconded by Bartlet. County Commissioners Bartlet. Yes. Duffy. Yes. Gallo. Yes. Lepore. Yes. Deputy Director Lazara. Yes. Director James. Yes.
If I could just a brief explanation, and Rich, maybe, Rich, why don't you come up here? But so what Rich is attempting to do here is there's a bunch of old capital ordinances that have money left in them from previous projects that we're going to roll into one project and then issue a...
Yes, that's exactly right. So one of the resolutions on the consent agenda was canceling a number of capital ordinance balances. Those balances are being canceled to fund balance, and now we're re-appropriating them into one ordinance. And the reason we're doing that is the number of lines that we canceled, there were probably funds on 12 or 14 different lines, and it was hard to find money for different projects. So we're canceling those monies, putting it all together, and then re-appropriating it as one ordinance.
And this will mostly be used for the engineering department when there are projects of an emergency nature. We just have one up in West Milford where a retaining wall next to a culvert collapsed, and obviously, you can't wait to go through the regular order of business. So this will be an opportunity to have this funded, all the monies in one place. But the important...
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes.
And a quick question. Has the application been before the Clifton Zoning Board already?
No, it's, I think they're waiting on the environmental impact statement. It is on the agenda. I don't know whether it's going to move through. The meeting's coming up next week. Hopefully, they'll have everything in order, because it really, it really needs to be evaluated. It should be evaluated by our state.
Thank you.
You know who's on that committee? Yeah, I mean, you know.
Environmental committee?
Yeah. Tell me after the meeting. I'm just curious if you know.
Oh, yeah. There's a few people on there that I'm aware of.
All right.
Here are Alessio Ramo.
I know Alessio, and she's a PhD, so I'll talk.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Thank you very much. Okay, consent agenda. Is anybody going to object to any item on L1 through L40? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda from L1 through L40.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll.
That was moved by Lepore.
Yes.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. We have new business capital ordinance. Lou, you want to read it?
Capital ordinance 2022-05. Capital ordinance of the County of Passaic, New Jersey, authorizing the undertaking of various infrastructure improvements in, by, and the county, appropriating therefore the sum of $5 million and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from general capital fund balance of the county.
If I could just a brief explanation, and Rich, maybe, Rich, why don't you come up here? So what Rich is attempting to do here is there's a bunch of old capital ordinances that have money left in them from previous projects that we're going to roll into one project and then issue it.
Yes, that's exactly right. So one of the resolutions on the consent agenda was canceling a number of capital ordinance balances. Those balances are being canceled to fund balance, and now we're re-appropriating them into one ordinance. And the reason we're doing that is the number of lines that we canceled, there were probably funds on 12 or 14 different lines, and it was hard to find money for different projects. So we're canceling those monies, putting it all together, and then re-appropriating it as one ordinance.
And this will mostly be used for the engineering department when there are projects of an emergency nature. We just have one up in West Milford where a retaining wall next to a culvert collapsed. And obviously, you can't wait to go through the regular order of business. So this will be an opportunity to have this funded, all the monies in one place. But the important part is not the issuance of new debt.
That's correct. It's fully funded.
Thank you.
So real quick, if I may. So translating old capital ordinance lines into plain English, there's money that we set aside to spend on capital improvements in the past, ended up not spending it, and it's still there. And we're just kind of organizing all that into one unit that then becomes available on an as-needed basis for future capital.
That's exactly right.
Great, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? Anybody?
Hearing none, can I have a motion to... Have a motion to introduce capital ordinance 2022-05 on the first reading.
I'll move it.
Second.
I'll second it.
Roll.
Lepore, and then seconded by Duffy.
Yeah.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Can I have a motion on the personnel agenda?
Move the personnel.
Second.
Second was Bartlett. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Motion passed to approve the bills list.
Move the bills. Second. Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move motion.
Second. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes.
Thank you all. Who's hungry? Anybody hungry? Come see.